This evening. A little bit of background and then we'll set the stage. I will be very, very brief. A little bit of background. About a year ago, Madamie Homes received a contract with the Celebration Company to develop Island Village. Madamie Homes held in this room last March, a briefing, just to introduce themselves as a company and some general concepts. In March, as in every March over the last many years, a new board takes over, a new Board of Directors. The elections are forthcoming and so some of the board turns over. These are two-year terms staggered. And then also this month, Madamie announced that they were breaking ground and they'll talk a little bit further about what progress they have made since breaking ground for the road going into Island Village. When we met as a newly constituted board last March, and again, this is right when Madamie was making their introductions with all of us, we decided it would be good to collaborate with them because they were newcomers into town. They were the new folks. We have a lot of experience. All of us have some or many years of love with Celebration before we lived here or while we are living here. So collectively, we decided that we wanted to meet and work together to the extent that we could. Talk about collaboration, talk about communication. We set up an ad hoc informal group. We put together three of us from Crowa, Brian Kinzel and myself and Steve Waring, the executive director, two from the CCDD. We had Gary Moyer and Freud McCollum and then a Crowa hired architect, Jeffrey Malin. So we became the ad hoc group in collaboration with the Madamie folks. We met periodically and then over the last, what is that, eight months? We've met numerous times. We've updated the community. We had an article with what we knew in August that we shared in the Celebration News to share that with you. And then there's been some other periodic updates. We've shared those in our board workshops and in our monthly meetings. Why did we want to do this? Madamie was new. We wanted to share some of our thoughts, some of our lessons learned, some of our insights, some of our recommendations. We wanted to continue the look and the love of Celebration. We have a look, we have a pattern book. We wanted to share that so that they didn't just come in and build something that in a few years or a little before that, will become part of all of us and it'll be a several year development process that they'll share. We wanted consistency and we wanted communication. So, some decisions, just in terms of the overall decision-making process. We are the Crowa Board. Most of us are here, most or all of us are here tonight. We are the Homeowners Association. However, the decisions made for Island Village are between Madamie, the Celebration Company, which is really Disney, and Osceola County. Now, within Osceola County, there's the Board of Supervisors and we're pleased to have Peggy Choudry here tonight and who is one of, in the middle, and I'm sure we'll hear from her later. We've all met Peggy, many of us have met her before. And so she is a Commissioner on the County Board of Supervisors. We also have Terry Castillo, who is here newly elected to the School Board for Osceola County. So a lot of the decisions that have to do with, well, all the decisions that have to do with Island Village are based with the Celebration Company, Madamie, and county entities, the Board of Supervisors and the School Board. We wanted to insert ourselves into that process so that Celebration that we know and that we love continues and we're very excited about this new development. So, this community session tonight, we've scheduled from six to eight. The Madamie folks will be leading the meeting. They're going to do a presentation and then they will take questions. So when we get to the point of the questions, we'll bring the microphone. You can come up and raise your question to them. There may be some questions that would be addressed by Terry from the School Board or Peggy from the County or Dave Tomac, who is also here. So that will be the outline. This is not a sales presentation. We and the Crowa Board are not here to endorse. We are here to facilitate communication and cooperation and we are very, very excited to welcome this new entity to our community and we look forward to welcoming our new residents in the years, not months, years to come. So I'm going to turn it over to Bennett Ruadis, who will then introduce his team and carry the presentation for all of us to learn and to enjoy. Thank you for being here.
Thank you very much, David. Can you hear me okay? Again, my name is Bennett Ruadis. I'm a project manager with Madamie Homes. I've been with, I've been in the industry for, gosh, a long time. You're going to ask me about that later on, but I've been working in the industry for a long time. Let me tell you a little bit about me, just to give you a little bit of humanist, you know, about, about me and our company and all that. I'm a proud graduate of the University of Florida, studied civil engineering there. Also got my MBA from our Rollins College and started getting into, when I started working, I was doing engineering but transitioned into real estate development. My wife, Susan and I have been married for over sixteen, 18 years. Got to get that right. We've been married for over 18 years and we have two kids. They were both born here in, in central Florida and they are both high school, in high school right now, a junior and a freshman. So, part of why I do this is because of, is because of them and hopefully, part of why we are part of a community, you are here for a community, is to enhance your lifestyle, enhance your family's lifestyle here in Celebration. So we're very, very excited as not only Madamie Homes, but the team, the team that is with me today. Let me also piggyback on what David had said here about the expectations for the meeting here. I know it's in the evening. We appreciate your time to be here with us and for you to listen to us. We're going to have probably a very lively question and answer session towards the end, which we are going to happily field as best as we can with you, but at some point in the evening, everybody's going to be hungry. So we could talk personally all night about Island Village, but I don't think everybody wants to do that. So we do want to start turning this, the meeting down, probably around seven forty-five or so and, you know, if, you know, if the meeting's going great, we could continue meeting at alternate location, if that's okay with everybody, if you'd care to join us. So, having said that, go ahead to the next slide there, sir, please. This is our meeting agenda, if you could see it up there on your monitors. The purpose really of our meeting again tonight is to inform and communicate what is going on with Island Village to you as the residents, as well as to other people who are interested in, in the community, in Island Village. Is this typical for a developer to do this? Sort of, not really, okay? So David had mentioned last year in March, we wanted to come out and inform and have a town hall style meeting and we did that voluntarily, right? We didn't have to come out. We didn't have to come out with, with David and the ad hoc group. We didn't have to do that, but we voluntarily did that because we believed in our, in our own core, that we wanted to communicate and get this information out to everybody. And we found out throughout the process that those values, those types of values of communicating and all that, were consistent with what is the foundation of Celebration and the five cornerstones, which I'll get to in a few minutes here. Also, the purpose of the meeting is to talk about the land plan, okay? It is not necessarily about the buildings. Those are things that will come later on in the process. We're still developing the buildings. When I say the buildings, I mean the school building, I mean the apartment buildings, and I also mean the single-family and the multifamily homes that will be there, town homes and in our single-family product that we ultimately will be building there. And, and, and one of the other last purposes, main purposes of this meeting is, okay, yes, we have to do this as a requirement by the Osceola County Board of Commissioners ahead of what we are about to go into in the next, what are we, 12, 12 days or so, for our public hearing approvals that ultimately end up with the Board of County Commissioners. And we'll get more into that later as well, okay? So as David had mentioned, last time was a town hall, open session, you know, we went through, purposely we went through a group of slides, then fielded questions, another group of slide, fielded questions. We're doing a little bit different this time, plus because we have a lot more material that has evolved since. So we want to get through all of it and then at the end, if you don't mind, please, we're going to field questions at the end. I think we're going to have, we're going to do it sort of come up to the mic style so you're not back there, you know, we know where the bullets are coming from, you know, from over, from over the mic, whenever we set that up. So, let me introduce to you some of the members of our team. There's a lot of people working on this behind the scenes. Last time, it was me at the mic. We had Keith Trace, who was the Vice President of Land Development with Madamie Homes. He was up at the, up at the front. He's still with us, but he's, he's about around here somewhere else. We had our Vice President of Marketing, who, who we have a, a new director in the back who is also working for us. But these are our subject matter, our subject matter experts who are in on the design of Celebration Island, well, Island Village. And let me start with the team from, from NAC Design with, with Tim Salca. If you could please introduce yourself in a brief.
Yes, my name's Tim Salca. I work for NAC Design Strategies here in Orlando. I'm a Registered Landscape Architect and my position at NAC is a Senior Project Manager.
Hello, I'm Ryan Seacrest. I'm a Registered Landscape Architect as well. Been practicing for about 10 years. I'm with, I'm a project manager at NAC. Bennett likes to, for us to be a little bit personal, so a little more reserved, I don't know. I'm a Libra, for those of you who care.
Hello, I'm Chris Thompson. I'm a Florida native and resident of the Orlando area for a little over three years now. I got both my undergrad and master's degree from the University of Florida, civil engineer. I've been practicing in the field for a little over a decade now and I am the project manager for several of, project manager consultant for Madamie for several of the engineering aspects of the development.
I'm Edward Wood. I'm the Senior Vice President of Property Development for Streetlights Residential. I'm a long-term lifetime central Florida resident and got my MBA, same place you did, so a long-time guy here in town, so thank you very much.
Yes, and you're a University of Central Florida, many generations.
UCF, that's correct. Yeah, my family has lived in central Florida for 100 years.
Jeff, do you want to introduce yourself, sir? You're going to be presenting later. No, yeah, okay, all right, good. I'll introduce Jeff myself, how's that? Is that okay? So Jeffrey, Jeff Hastings is our Architectural Manager at the Orlando Division. He helps handle many of the other, the licensed architects who build or who design our homes, not just for Island Village, but for, well, the other communities that nobody in this room really cares about for tonight. But, but he is in charge of our product development really, as it relates to home layouts and elevations and styles and all that. And he'll be talking a little bit later here about, or not, he keeps nodding his head. Paul, Paul is the Vice President from our corporate office. Paul Smith is our Vice President of Architecture and he could, one of them is going to talk about the homes, it's not going to be, it's not going to be me. So, okay. So, before you leave off of this slide here, Ryan, this is a quick, what we're going to do here with, we're going through the introductions, we're moving on really quickly now to the cornerstones of what, of what we have been observing and learning throughout this process, which, go ahead and flip to that slide there. So, everybody knows, right? We have five cornerstones here in Celebration. I'm going to rattle them off, education, health, place, technology, and community. I didn't, I purposely did not say that on the order that's up on the screen here. And we created this little, this little graphic to kind of embody those cornerstones around the Celebration logo, which is the, which is the overall community, the town of Celebration, right? And for Island Village, yes, we have an educational aspect. We are, we, we, as Madamie Homes, the master developer per se, okay? We are developing the grounds, the site for the K through five elementary school that the school district will then build vertically. As far as health, we're not building a hospital. There's a, there's a, I think a pretty big hospital around here somewhere right down the road. However, we are trying to integrate healthy lifestyles, active lifestyles within our communities via trails, via parks, via activity centers that, that aren't so, you know, activity, you know, computer activity driven, that's not activity. That's, you know, kids playing Fortnite, that's not real activity, right? So, so that's health, technology. It's a little bit more of a difficult question or a cornerstone for us to answer, however, as it relates to Internet of Things, smart homes and all that, we could talk about that later. We, that's a technology, that's an aspect of the, the cornerstones, technology is something that continues to evolve and as home builders, as Madamie Homes, we definitely integrate new things into the home that the consumers want, right? As, as, as it relates to infrastructure, yes, we're talking with some consultants here and how are we bringing in fiber into the home? How are we, how are we going to be dealing with, not necessarily Wi-Fi, but what is it, the 4G slash 5G, you know? So, exciting stuff, but not necessarily things that are in our purview. We would have to partner with someone like an AT&amp;T or Verizon or a cell tower, cell tower operator, if that's the way it goes, okay? Related to place, it's about architecture, it's about placemaking, it's about where things are in Island Village related to another thing. Why did we place it there? And we did a lot of studying with, with the existing community here, not just main village, but also the other villages, North Village, South Village, Artisan Park, to see, okay, how did, how was the design done and how could we emulate and make it better? Now, we also sought the, the advice and the review of the Celebration Company and some of their experts to help, to help guide us, you know, in a particular direction that, that they want to see it as well. But I wanted to resolve what I personally think was the most important, most important cornerstone. And it's just an opinion, right? And that's community, right? So, when we first came here, as I said earlier, we came to some of the meetings and we wanted to approach Crowa and, and the CCDs to see, okay, what's going on? How can we engage? We want to, we want to, now I want to be part of the community, we want to communicate to that community. And as we were looking and going through the process of this, we found that community is, just an opinion, shoot bullets at me later, but we, I found that community is much, much larger than the town of Celebration. It's much larger than that. And maybe, see if you can follow me for a second here. Next slide, please. So we created this crazy, crazy graphic, I call it these, what do we call it? The Celebration Rows or the Community Rows. And what we have in the central or in the core of this, of this graphic are the five cornerstones that surround the town of Celebration. But what are these other petals that are around this, this core that make up this entire rows, right? And there are different entities that are involved in this, in the development of Island Village, right? Don't flip it yet, I'm just going to go, and I'll walk us through this, don't you worry. I'll walk us through this. Hopefully it's not too laborious. But there's the Celebration Entities. Everybody knows that is alphabet soup. And I'm looking at that, that's great, but I found the eye, I'm finding out, we're all finding out, that it's much more than alphabet soup. It's chunky soup. There's a lot of other stuff in there, other than just alphabet, in this whole soup. And I hope I'm getting you hungry. Government agencies, you know, we're dealing with, with a lot of government agencies. Our consultants, of course, the Celebration Company, and finally, the, the large landowners, Madamie being one of the, the master developers, and I'll reintroduce again and remind you who those other, other folks are. Could you go ahead and flip? So obviously, in this part of the petal, the petal of the rows, again, the Celebration Entities, that includes the residents, that's you, that's, that's alphabet soup. That's also the committees that were, are formed here in Celebration. It's also the ad hoc group that, that we created and wanted to, wanted to have this group to give us an opportunity to communicate to all these other, these other entities in here, mainly Crowa and mainly the CCDD, because they're resident-controlled. Next, please. The government agencies. As we mentioned earlier, this is a process that will ultimately be approved by Osceola County. However, Reedy Creek Improvement District has a, has a review opportunity here. They, we are crossing Reedy Creek and are adjacent to the body of water that is Reedy Creek. We are dealing with them. We're dealing with FDEP, the Florida Department of Environmental Protection, and what's that other one there? FDEP, oh my goodness. And a lot more. FDOT, FDOT, you name it, if it's got an F in it, we're dealing with. Florida Fish and Wildlife, you name it, there's a lot more organizations here on the government side that we're dealing with. You get the point, right? There's a lot of, there's a lot of folks there that we're dealing with. Related to our consulting team and our, and our construction team, as we mentioned earlier, NAC Design Strategies is our land planner, as well as our landscape architect. Atkins is our engineer, but they do a lot more than just civil engineering for us. They're doing the ecological consulting for us, related to endangered species. They're doing the bridge and structural engineering for us. They do survey for us. They're chopping up the land into bits and pieces of parcels and lots that we'll ultimately sell and deed over to Crowa and other entities. LRK to a, to a degree is also, on one hand, they are also the, what do you call it? The town architect or the architect for the Celebration Company. But on another hand, they are helping us on the design team with the design of, of a building or an amenity or the apartment complex. Right now, presently, we have one contractor who is our, our main site contractor that will be, that'll be working on the road slash bridge, and that's Junior Davis Construction Company. There's a lot more to that team as well. You know, just even though there's a lot of people involved here. Celebration Company, that's kind of easy, right? It's Celebration Company. We're dealing with them, we've got a few people that we deal with directly and behind them, there's, I'm sure there's a trove of people that are working with the, with the design team or the review team over there at the Celebration Company. With the Celebration Company, LRK, Looney Wicks Kiss, who has an office here on Front Street, is, is working with them as a reviewer for our plans. Last but not least, the main, the main landowners that's in Celebration as it stands right now, right? Madamie Homes, obviously, we're acting as the master developer per se, other than, you know, the previous developers like Celebration Company. But for Island Village, Madamie Homes, behind, within our Phase One, we have the apartment complex, Streetlights Residential. Edward will talk more about that. And then of course, the elementary school, they're doing their building as well. So the school district of Osceola County is involved. So back to this gargantuan rows here, you know, you know, what is the point here, Bennett? What are you, what are you trying to say? There's not one group here that gets full say of what happens at Island Village or even at the town of Celebration, right? But for, for Island Village specifically, there, there's not one group that gets a perfect Island Village, right? We're going to push and pull and push and pull and eventually, all those forces and pressures are going to have spit out, have produced this result that we are, that we are presenting today, which is the land plan for Island Village. Everybody has their own different perspectives and not one perspective is going to override the other. And what, at the end of today, what we're trying to do is because of this extended community, right? Because of these five different groups of people here, Island Village is, is, you know, for each individual, it's not perfect, but as a whole, Island Village is much more perfect than it would have been without the collaboration of community, okay? So, in other words, we're looking for balance. Not perfection, just balance, right? And balance among everybody that's involved in this community. Does that make sense? Okay, perfect. We learned a lot of lessons. We've learned a tremendous amount of lessons from, from everybody, from this community, including the ad hoc group. We are very grateful and humbled by the fact that, by the fact that they want to come out and, and engage us and, and, and hopefully, they understand that we're trying to reciprocate that relationship as well, right? But we don't, we've only been on property for a couple of months, a little over a year. You guys are residents, so we wanted to engage that expertise. We wanted to, and we're getting that from the ad hoc group, we're getting that from the Celebration Company and their folks. And they're guiding us in how we're doing. We're not just not coming in here and saying, hey, here's a tract of land, let's go ahead and start, you know, clearing, putting homes in there. No, 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 no. There's a reason why you've got to clear it a certain way. There's a reason why you have to design it a certain way. And with, certainly with the Celebration Company, they, they have a, they have input in what we're doing here. Certainly with the ad hoc group, Crowa and, and CCD, we're looking at, okay, how better to maintain, operate and maintain this so that we're not setting it up for a future disaster that you may have learned already in some of your other villages. The big point with the lessons that we've learned here is that with that collaboration, it leads to communication and with that communication leads to context of why something is, is designed a certain way and around it, why is, why is it, why is it there and how does it affect something else? So we're going to get into some of the, some of the fun stuff here in just a second here. So, an overall of what's going on here with Island Village, we know where we are. Go ahead and, next slide. Greater Orlando area, the big green dot is Celebration, north is Orange County, south is Osceola County. Celebration includes all of these villages, including Island Village. Island Vill, whoops, I'm sorry. Island Village is this lobe of green down here on the south part of the, bottom part of the, the slide here. As you can see, we are a little removed from the main village with the Celebration, as Crow flies about three, a little bit over three miles from, from where we are right now, from downtown Celebration. Ooh, leave it there. This is where, this is where it gets kind of fun, right? So, let's talk about the different doors that we've introduced to, to our vernacular here, or we call them Madamie-isms or Bennett-isms or whatever you want to call them, right? We've got a front door, right? Which is how are we going to get to Island Village? It's past the high school. We're building a road past the high school to get down to the front door of, of Island Village. We call it, we call it a side door. There is a side door that's involved here. It is a construction access-only door. We're working on trying to get our permits to the Florida Department of Transportation so that we're able to build from the south side of Reedy Creek, which separates us from the high school right now, from, I'm sorry, from Island Village and the high school, which is between it, right? That's a ramp or whatever, it's, it's an access road off of the ramp. It's not, it's a non-public access, it's construction-only access that hopefully, we could also secure it for assist, for, for the schools to also build their infrastructure while we're still trying to build a bridge over, over Reedy Creek. But if we're going to talk about the front door and the side door, we have to talk about the back door or the secondary access, which is very, I'm sure everybody knows, very controversial, but we're here, let's talk about it, okay? So my, our understanding, we didn't have this, I personally did not have as clear an understanding about this issue probably several months ago, but the comp plan in 2013, the Osceola County Comprehensive Plan, had a plan, had a road plan back in 2013 or so that a big highway was going to come through Island Village. Later on, around 2016, 2017, when they were, they were processing an amendment to that comprehensive plan, they moved that big highway away from Island Village, however, they inserted a connector road through Island Village. So a connector road through Island Village will come. What are the pros of that? What are the pros of that? For us, we think the pros are provides connectivity, provides alternate access to Island Village from the south. It also provides alternative emergency access for the fire stations, not just Fire Station 72 up here on Celebration Place, but also Fire Station, I believe it's 73 down there on Osceola Poke Road to enter the site from the south side. The cons, everybody knows, traffic, right? And we are concerned about that as well. Now, let me talk about that. You know, last month, David had mentioned, not last month, several months ago, in the summer, in August, that summer, not December, summer. Madamie had mentioned via an article that we helped create and also publicly that we didn't want a back door. However, the reason why we didn't want a back door, let's get to the real reason why we didn't want a back door, is because the back door could change the characteristics of the road network throughout Island Village. We did not want a four-lane highway coming through the village, Island Village. It was just as plain as that. So we are not there, that's the good news. We are not at a four-lane road, but the question still remains, does Madamie want a back door? And the real answer, it's not up to Madamie. It's already in the Comprehensive Plan with Osceola County and I believe if, you know, during the Q and A, we could ask questions about that. You know, if I misspoke, county representatives can correct me and all that. But hopefully we can bring more clarity to that issue. Our concern again is the characteristic of the road. Is that a fast-moving road? No, we don't want that at all. We do not want that at all. Okay? So I wanted to kind of handle that before I gave it over to Chris because Chris, as our engineer, wasn't necessarily in on that and let me take the heat for that. So let me transition over to, is it Chris or Tim? Oh, I'm sorry. Let me transition over to Tim and he's going to talk a little bit about Island Village itself. Take it away, Tim.
Okay. Well, thank you for having us here tonight. We're very happy that so many people turned out to see what we have to say and to listen and hopefully we can get you some answers afterward and you can start to understand, you know, the vision that we're trying to carry forward. I think as we progress through the slides, you're going to see that there's a lot of similarities and, you know, we look at this project as, well, from a landscape architecture standpoint, you know, I've been in the profession over 18 years now and to this day Celebration is kind of the gold standard that people refer to when they talk about new urbanism or traditional neighborhood design even. Sure, is that better? Okay, thank you. Sure, no problem. So, you know, we see this as a legacy project. MAC wants, everybody at MAC is very excited about this project and we're really, you know, excited about getting into the details and, you know, we've kind of, I like to say we've reverse engineered a lot of the details that you see in existing Celebration to make sure that we can carry those elements forward in the plans. So this is the phasing plan and you'll see that in total, the Island Village will have four phases that total build out with a total of 1,310 units permitted. This is the site plan. We'll get into this a little deeper further into the presentation, but it's kind of applicable to show it at this point. You know, at this scale, a lot of people look at that plan and they probably don't get too excited about it, but once we get into the nuances of it and start to show you, you know, the things that are built into it, I think you'll really start to appreciate it a lot more. You know, I like to think of, you know, a plan as kind of a recipe almost. You have to build it in at this scale, right? You have to build in the road network. You have to build in the pedestrian connections. You have to build in the density in the right places. You can't try to go put those things in later. You know, it's like trying to add a cake or an egg to a cake after you already baked it. It just doesn't work. This is a comparison slide with the first phase of Island Village to the main village of Celebration. So you can start to see, you know, a lot of the same characteristics in it. You know, it almost feels a little bit like the other side is just a scaled-down version or a portion of it, but, you know, what we've tried to do is create the core that you have in downtown right now, not recreate it, but have a similar feel to it so that it's consistent. There's more density, there's the multifamily in the center, which is the brown. The red would be some commercial or mixed-use space. And then the school. The school is part of that core as well. There's connectivity between Celebration and Celebration along the main boulevard to the school, but the school is also connected to the downtown. It's connected as part of that core that's pedestrian friendly, so, you know, kids can come from the multifamily through parks and things like that. So scale-wise, it is small, but I think you'll see, especially on some of the renderings, that it has a very similar feel. So some of the common themes that we're trying to carry forward, obviously the architecture is very important. You know, we're guided by the existing pattern book. We're also guided by the planting pattern. We're also guided by, you know, trying to recreate, you know, the same character and same characteristics that makes Celebration the special place that it is. So this is a great rendering. I think it really starts to capture some of the feeling that hopefully you've come to know in Celebration. You know, if you kind of did the movie director thing and started to, you know, crop out pieces of that, I think you could swap them out and kind of think about where that might be in existing Celebration already. You know, whether that's along the waterfront or some of the different park features or an engaged park, but all those things are kind of baked into the plan at this level to make sure that they're there. I think Chris is going to talk briefly about the main boulevard here.
Hello. For those of you, just wanted to remind you, Chris Thompson, I'm the Civil Engineering Project Manager for Madamie, handling a lot of the engineering components of this project. I will tell you that working as a civil engineer, you really want to toil anonymity. You want nobody to ever know that you did anything on a project because if they know you did it, it's because you screwed up. So everything that we're doing right here, everything that I'm doing right here goes against everything that everybody in my profession would want to do. I don't want to be up here at the front talking to you, but that's not what Celebration's about. Celebration's a unique place and it has a lot of great aesthetic components that you are going to hear Tim and Bennett and Ed talk about and whichever one of the architectural gentlemen loses the rock, paper, scissors battle over there. But I will enter into the discussion here in a few points tonight to talk about some technical aspects that make Celebration Island Village possible. And the first component of this is getting to Celebration Island Village. From some of these exhibits that you have here, you can notice that there is a gap from Celebration High School and the Emerson Square Apartments that you can see in this exhibit to the lovely development and the land plan that you see here in the model and some of those exhibits. Well, that involves a roadway about a mile in length that brings utilities, potable water, et cetera, into the community and also creates additional traffic flow and an intersection at the current end of Celebration Boulevard. We, at the beginning of this project, when we started the design, evaluated the different ways that you could handle that intersection that's created there and determined that the most efficient way to bring the least amount of trouble and issues to traffic traveling through this intersection was to build a roundabout right there at the entrance of Celebration High School to start your mile journey into Celebration Island Village. And so at that point, at this point, I will hand it back to Tim to discuss some of those prettier parts before your eyes glass over.
Thanks, Chris. So one of the features that we're pretty excited about is the bridge. There's a required bridge crossing to get to Island Village and we thought it provided a great opportunity to incorporate some of the iconic monumentation that's part of Celebration. You know, it's these types of features that really create that sense of place that everybody loves about living here. So one of the thoughts we had was, you know, trying to make this bridge feature, you know, something special. Make it feel like a gateway element as you come into the Island Village. Make it feel like it's been there for a long time and that there's something special ahead and a reason for it to be there. We also think it can kind of serve as kind of a compression zone that'll slow people down. You know, typically when you go over a bridge unless you're on I-4 or the tollway, you know, you do kind of take your foot off the gas a little bit. You do kind of look around, you do kind of enjoy it a little bit more. We're hoping that this feature can be one of those places where people just kind of slow down, take a look, it can kind of welcome them home in the evening and kind of bid them farewell in the morning as they go. So we're looking at, you know, different type of architectural features. You know, we want it to be an interesting feature, so, you know, it wouldn't just be your standard, you know, prefab type of bridge that you'll see a lot of nowadays. It would have a higher level of design to it. So it's currently under design and maybe, did you want to talk about that a little bit more? It's still under the approval process as well.
Yes, so our design is going right now through the process of review with Celebration Company as well as with the CCDD, the Celebration CCD, in terms of how is the CCD going to own and operate and maintain this thing? And from an aesthetic review, that would be with the Celebration Company. We're working through that process right now. It's not yet critical to our construction, but we're trying to work through that now so that we can not be critical to our construction, i.e. it doesn't hold up delays later on down the road for us.
So yeah, you know, we think it can become like a very, not only just a literal connection to Celebration, but figuratively, you know, it connects the residents, I think. You know, it provides an ample trail connection, so people will be able to ride bikes, kids will be able to ride scooters or walk and run and, you know, go all the way out to Island Village. Next, we're going to get, take a little deeper dive into the site plan and some of the features that are kind of baked into that plan that I talked about earlier. Again, this is just the location map, just a reminder of how it kind of sits in relationship to existing Celebration. And then this is, now we're coming back to the site plan. So, you know, this model is such a fantastic exhibit. You don't often get a model like this to be able to walk around, look at different views and really appreciate, so we should certainly commend Madamie for all the effort of bringing it and having it here tonight, so. But I certainly encourage you to come up and take different views, look down the streets, you know, start to understand how they're laid out. You know, there's areas where there's certain vistas, you know, as you come in, for instance, you know, take a look down the road, you'll see that you'll have a beautiful view across the water. Most of the people have to drive by water, drive by the mixed use and be able to, you know, experience that. That's one of the things that, you know, is so nice about Celebration. You do have a lot of existing water that people can drive by and see, but this design in particular makes it very accessible for everyone. Another very nice feature is, you know, the central road between the multifamily. You know, you don't get a view of water at two ends of a street very often. It's a very unique element and I think once you start to look at some of the elements in the plan, you'll really start to appreciate it. Other things to look at, just the street network, you'll start to see the trails connections that are evident, you know, coming in from existing Celebration, the trails around the lakes. But also, you know, there's things baked into the plan like news. You know, this provides a connection instead of having, you know, kids have to walk all the way around the block, they're able to access the school directly. So there's a lot of new urbanist principles that are baked into it, but at this scale, they're hard to see, but once you start to look at the details, they become more evident. Some of those principles again, walkability, I mentioned the trails a moment ago, but, you know, pay attention to the trails network, the pedestrian rail along roads. You know, it's, we're trying to match that character. We're trying to match the architectural facades, have interest, you know, it'll be varying houses. And when you look at the plan, you'll see that there's many, many different models. They'll also be using the pattern book, so there'll be multiple different styles as well, so it'll be a mixed experience as you go through it. The colors also relate to different sizes, so you can also see that, that the housing styles are mixed in, which is a principle of new urbanism as well. Quality architecture and design, I just mentioned that, but also pay attention to where things are located. You know, you'll start to notice the parks that are spread throughout, you know, the different green spaces that provide amenity for people, not only at the core, but integrated in the neighborhoods. There's pocket parks, there's engaged parks, there's, you know, other lakes and trails that you should be aware of. And then the traditional neighborhood design, of course, which we've kind of talked about already, but having the density at the core, having the density near amenity, so the multifamily is there, the townhomes are also there and, you know, the school is in that area as well and also the future amenity site. These are things that you can probably look at closer in the model in a few minutes, but did just want to point out the walkability again, you know, the connections for people, the trail system and then the street network as well. When you start to look on the model, you'll start to see how those streets start to feel. Connectivity of streets. You'll see that there's a logical system of streets. There's not dead ends. There's, you know, it makes sense, it's easy to get around and, you know, it's an efficient system, I guess. Mixture of housing, I kind of talked about that, but this is a good example. You can see all the different lot colors, so they're mixed in, you know, it's all integrated. And the quality of the urban design, you know, the higher density, placing amenities in good locations where they can be used by everyone and enjoyed. Placing the amenity on a lake gives everybody access to the lake. You know, lining up streets so there's good views at the end of them instead of, you know, whether it's just housing or various things. So those are the types of things that are baked into the plan that aren't really noticeable by anyone when you just look at it in plain view. Traditional neighborhood structure going at the core. So how did we quantify the park system? So to match the, to be consistent and try to match the quality and character, you know, we had to look at it, you know, well, how many parks do we need? How can we achieve that? So, you know, we did a study of basically the populations that different parks provided. So it was rooftops divided by the parks and it kind of gave us the density that we needed. So this kind of shows your distribution of amenity, of community amenity. So those would be like pools, the purple are the schools where they have shared facilities that you can use. can use, whether those are ball fields or tennis or things like that. So, when we did that, you know, we started to see what kind of a density we needed to achieve with different parks and open spaces, and, you know, kind of based on the radius, you know, the five-minute walking radius, you can see that the parks that we've distributed into the master plan are matching, matching the density that's in existing in Celebration. These other shots, we'll start to look at kind of what the design of some of these spaces might be, what they might feel like. These are standard designs, so, you know, they're not worked out, but they're just to kind of give you an idea of what these types of spaces might feel like. So, the engaged park, you know, we looked at, we looked at things that we thought worked well, open spaces, spaces that weren't overly, I guess, designed or planted. It seems like sometimes the parks were so planted that people can't really, you know, have games or recreate in them sometimes. Excuse me. But in this study, you know, we tried to create a large lawn area and then provide spaces for residents to gather. So, we did like community tables. These wouldn't be like a typical picnic table that's too small for a large group of people to gather at. They'd be more like a farm table where people can, where multiple groups of people could sit at one table. This was the central park study. And it's the same kind of idea, you know, we're providing open spaces, probably some type of amenity or feature in a park this size, whether that's a shade structure or, you know, potentially a playground element, something like that, but providing places that are flexible for people to use. The community amenity, you know, what that might start to feel like. You know, it's got a premium location around the lake, that could easily be served for lots, but, you know, it's providing that feature for people to use, so it's great. Parks and trails. You'll start to notice that, you know, there's different, the different trails that are baked into the plan. This particular park provides a kind of a unique opportunity when you're looking across the lake, you know, it becomes a focal point as you're driving. You know, those are the types of things that, you know, we see in existing Celebration that we're trying to build into the Island Village. These are the roadway sections, so, Kristi, want to touch on those a little bit?
Sure. You guys have seen a lot of the layout, the land plan, but you don't really get too much detail on the roads and how those roads are going to look, what you're going to experience when you're out there. You just see a gray hatched area on a piece of paper. This first section here is the mile-long stretch roughly of Celebration Boulevard extension from the current terminus at Celebration High School into Island Village, into this first phase of the development. It's going to be striped as a two-lane road, it's got overpaved shoulders actually to provide three lanes in case there are any issues. It would help facilitate emergency vehicle access into the community. It is a conduit that serves as access into the community, not only for vehicular traffic, but also for the utilities, for the electricity, for the fiber optic, everything that you're going to be getting into all of your homes at, in Celebration Island Village.
Yeah, again, these are the, you know, I talked, reverse engineering a little bit, but, you know, we're trying to plan in these sections that, you know, they feel like Celebration, that they match the quality and the character, so, you know, a strong pedestrian realm, trails or sidewalks, whichever is applicable in a certain condition. So, these are more, actually, the section of the main boulevard within the residential sections.
Correct. This is what we have labeled as a Street A. It's an extension of Celebration Boulevard, but after you get to the first section of the, first intersection in the community. Once you get there, it's not a conduit to get from the rest of Celebration into Island Village. It is a, the main thoroughfare in the community that must convey traffic through the community, but also embrace the ideas and ideals of new urbanism and a walkable community. So, you have a two-lane road, but the lanes narrow, you pick up bike lanes as well as designated parking, parallel parking on both sides of the street.
So, I wanted to jump in on this, it might be, it's an appropriate time to talk about this particular section through Island Village and ultimately, you know, from, through Phase One all the way through Phase Four. This roadway section, we are examining still, again, here and talking about it with Osceola County, with some of the other residents. Right now, as it's designed and submitted into Osceola County, this is a facility, a roadway facility that is, that also includes bike lanes alongside it, right? We are working right now to see if there's a possibility that we could narrow the thing, the roadway section even further to help slow down, to help keep the characteristic of what we want out of Island Village on this, right? So, that includes the potential, we're not there yet, that includes the potential of eliminating the bike lanes to just have the travel lanes do there, and instead of the bike lanes, we would have parallel to it and away from the traffic, a ten-foot multi-use trail, where, you know, the kids, and there's a lot more walkability and safer walkability over there on the side, but also allows, you know, with a narrower road, allows for that character that we, as Manamy Holmes, as probably the community, want in that it is a slower road, you don't feel like you could go fast on it. That may help with the traffic issues, the traffic calming issues, or the traffic issues that could be created by the back door opening, but with adding all that friction into the system may prevent the, you know, the back door from really being a cut-through, rather, you know, use the main roads, Celebration, Island Village, or Island Village is not the place you want to cut through because you're just not going to move very fast there to begin with. We're still working on that, and, you know, hopefully we can come to a last-minute deal on that one way or the other. Let me keep going here. The last roadway section that I think we have here is the secondary roads. It's very typical of what we already see here in Celebration, which is two-way traffic, obviously with undesignedated parking on one side or other side of the road. In other words, no striped parking designated for that. What else? Is that it? Oh, okay. The elementary school. Let me take that as well. So, we, it wasn't necessarily a negotiation with the school district, there was always a elementary school planned for Island Village. The deal had to be sort of restructured or whatever because Manamy came into play, and Manamy was going to provide the dirt for the school, and I wish we had a, I wish, I think, we should put the larger plan in here, but if you look on some of the side plans over here, whatever, this big red blob is where the school is going to go. And as we looked at this, we decided, or we thought about it first, and we're still deciding, but we thought about it a lot, why should the school be up front? Is it appropriate for the school to be there? Where, could it go in a different location? And the answer is, is that we believe that this location for the K through five elementary school at Island Village should be nearer the front of the entire Island Village for many reasons. One, it's closer to downtown Celebration, where other kids, well, you know, Main Village, North Village, where all some of the other elementary kids may be coming from. If we had put it later or further back into the property of Island Village, it would be a further drive. Two, by putting it up front, we could deliver, we could hope to deliver the school much earlier than if it was somewhere, you know, further back in the property, even further back in Phase One. It was a great idea to put it up there, serves as also a natural buffer between Island Village and the interstate. And there's a lot of things that we're still working through with the school district. We actually meet with them regularly. We're going through site planning, we're helping them with the site planning, they're in charge of their own site planning. We're looking at it as, well, how does that affect us? Does it fit the character of what we're trying to do at Island Village? Also, the Celebration Company is involved in looking at their plans as well and weighing in on how that site plan comes about. But that's all on the school district with guidance and nudges from some of the other stakeholders like Manamy and Celebration Company. Also, operationally, how does this site plan work? Where's the traffic coming from? Where's it going to queue? How long the lines are? The idea is that it would be, you know, all that queuing and all that would be on the school property, however, again, that's going through the school district for their review and their design. How are they going to do that? How are they going to accommodate that? That will come later on in due process. Let me pass it on to Edward, he is with the apartment developer, Streetlights Residential. And Ed, would you like to take a look?
Thanks, Ed. I do, thank you very much. I appreciate all of you coming here this evening. When my grandparents moved here nearly a hundred years ago, Orlando was a little different. No I-4, no air conditioning, things were tough. And then, we got through the Second World War, and the 50s, really interesting things started happening. We got a missile plant, Cypress Gardens, Gatorland, really cool. And eventually, I-4 came along in the 60s, Florida Technological University came along, and a man named Walt Disney came along, recognized and believed in a special place called Orlando. And I have fond memories of Disney opening when I was a kid, and my wife and I started dating as juniors in high school, Winter Park High School, and I remember they used to have prom night and grad night, and they kept it open all night for the high school kids, I can't believe they did that. And we had our E-tickets for Space Mountain, and, you know, so I grew up in the shadow of something very special, which is Walt Disney. Color TV came along in the 50s, guess who was on there? Disney, education, cartoons, it was great. So, there's this whole culture for the last sixty or seventy years here in the United States and here in this town, that's beyond the orange groves that used to be here and the missile plant. We now have seventy-some-odd million visitors here for one reason, to come visit our world-class tourist attractions. I sound like Buddy Dyer on the tram in the airport. Welcome home, this is your Orlando mayor, Buddy Dyer. So, anyway, as I developed my career, graduated from high school, I'm still, my wife and I are still annual pass holders, we really have enjoyed watching Orlando grow. It has brought some bad stuff, a lot of traffic, that type thing. But what's really been special is a culture of family, a culture of entertainment, a culture of joy. You don't find that in many places in the United States as I've traveled around. I'm always glad to come home to Orlando. And as I developed my real estate career, I found some good things and bad things about apartments. The good thing is that one-third of our nation lives in rental communities of some form, so we are supplying an important need for the folks in the United States of America. As developers and managers, the bad thing is that we found, in our company, we found that it's depressing to build cookie cutter apartments, build and sell them, build and sell them, build and sell them. We collectively are all either former Tramco Residential Partners or former Gaber's Residential Partners, but all arrived at the same conclusion that we got tired of building places with barren soils with nothing interesting. You build it, it stands out in acres fine, you sell it and you move on. And so, Doug Chestnut, our founder, came up with is to stop doing that and to build something with a soul. Everything we build is design-oriented, it's a design-centric, we have our own in-house fifteen architects, and we specialize in intentional design. And our goal, if you go to our website, is to create beautiful places that lift the human spirit. Why? Because home is important. When you come home, that's your family, that's your private space, that's your food, that's your rest, that's your health, that's all the things that embody Celebration as a community. And the other thing we discovered is that we are going to build only where there's high walkability, mixed use, places for people to get to know each other. Scientists will tell us that longevity and health are related to one thing, you know what that is? Personal relationships. If you go inside your apartment or you go inside your home and you close the door, it's probably not too healthy if you don't know the people around you, if you don't have a social network, if you don't get out and have things to do in your community, it's kind of boring and you're not going to have longevity, scientists tell us you will, if you have a good network of things around you. And so, Streetlights Residential, we really are taking it to the next level. We build the highest level of apartments in any community that we go to. We only build where there's walkability. We consider the street our friend, we don't have a single gated community. We believe the street is your friend, therefore, our name is Streetlights Residential. There's a picture there in your mind when you hear "streetlights," you think walking outside at night and how safe and fun that feels. And so, that's why we exist, and Celebration is a special place. I ran the, when I was president of Tramco Residential Services, I had the privilege of being selected to run the Pritzker portfolio, so I ran the Center Gate portfolio here in Baldwin Park and many other areas. The Center Gate property here now is known as Sienna, but I got a good taste of Celebration. I always watched it from afar as a professional, looking at Celebration skeptical, oh, well, great, where do these guys know? How can they, you know, build this Mayberry, you know, in Florida? And you know what I discovered? Is that if you pay attention to the secret details that Disney is famous for, to how the roads are laid out, what the views are, what plant material go in the ground where your park space is, then what you're building, I'm building indoor rooms, Manamy's building indoor rooms, but what we live in is the outdoor rooms of this green space and the landscape areas and the parks and the recreational opportunities. Let me take just a moment, look at a couple of these elevations. These are just representations of our schemes. We're going to, we're planning right now to build nine separate buildings consisting of three hundred apartments. We'll have two four-story buildings and the rest will be three, you can go flip through a couple of those. And these are just some, you can see it up here in the model, you don't need to belabor any of these. Hold it, go back one more, go back to the site plan. We're going to be building in three separate parcels, which each self-contained its parking. Okay, keep going. That's just a typical layout of the site plan, keep going. An elevation. All right, hit it right there. Now, let me tell you a little bit about the community we're planning to build. We've been asked by Manamy to work with the Celebration Company, with Manamy Holmes and LRK Town Architect, to build a town center in our apartment community. Ironically, before we even got here, we typically used LRK, Louis Rix Kisses Architect, for all of our apartment, most of our apartments, not all of them, but most of our apartments, because they're the finest in apartment architecture, we feel. And it just so happened that they happen to be the town architect here, which is right in our wheelhouse, and so we're using their design studio in Baton Rouge for this, and working with Mark Jones here in Celebration, in cooperation with the Celebration Company, Manamy, what we're coming up with. So, this is a real collaborative effort in what we're designing. We're planning on three hundred apartment homes, fifteen percent are right now are scheduled to be three-bedroom, forty-five percent will be two-bedroom, and forty percent will be one-bedroom. They'll average around just under twelve hundred square feet per unit, so they're really big apartment homes. And we're also going to build ten thousand square feet of retail slash restaurant commercial space, and that will be utilized hopefully by vendors for food and beverage, that would be our goal, ice cream stores, coffee shops, restaurant, it would be our goal. There are things we're prohibited having, when I can have tattoo shops or bunker stores or, you know, bong stores or anything like that, marijuana outlets. Disney frowns upon those type of things, as you know. But we hope it'll be very family-oriented, a great place for parents, grandparents to drop their kids off on the way to school, get some coffee, read a paper, that type thing. We will own that, we will manage that, we've already contacted a friend of mine, John Crossman, Crossman and Company, to do our leasing there, well-known here in Celebration, the best in the industry, we feel. And so, that's our vision at this point in time, but let me, we'll take questions at the end, but I'd just like to, I'd like to end on a bit of a personal. a bit of a personal note, just a little introspection about what we're doing here tonight. What makes Celebration special are the five goals that Bennett talked about earlier. Community, education, health, place, technology. You know, all those things are nice words to say and look really good on your rose and all that. But those words pertain to people. Zoning does not refer to buildings, that refers to people using buildings. So all these relate to the human element of that. Planned communities are not about real estate zoning. Planned communities are about relationship and how people relate to the space. And so we believe strongly in crafting a place that when you come home, makes you feel good to be there. All of you are here tonight for one reason, because Walt Disney had a vision and because that vision works. You're here because you've got that sense of community. We can work together to build a place that collectively lifts our human spirit. So it's a good place to go home, isn't it? All right, thank you.
Thank you, Ed. And our next part of the presentation is related to Manamy Homes and our actual homes. So if Paul or Jeff were Paul, the guy in the suit, I suppose, you know, Paul?
Please take it away. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Not only did I lose the rock-paper-scissors, I have to go after Ed, who's particularly So everyone at Manamy was extremely proud that Celebration Company selected Manamy Homes to be, to build the last major residential phase in Celebration. And I don't think anyone was excited at Manamy as I was about being able to be part of this iconic community. I've been designing homes for about 25 years, and every time we design homes for a community in that time, Celebration is always in the back of our minds as the archetype of good architecture and good community planning. So this is a site planning meeting, not so much a product meeting. I won't touch, dwell on too much on the product, but just to give you a flavor of what Manamy will be offering. So we do have five product types that we'll be offering here at Celebration, in Celebration Island Village. We have our motor courts, which are our single-story family product, a unique product style for Florida that we hadn't done in Florida before. We have 24-foot townhomes, rear-loaded. We have 45-foot single-family, 55-foot single-family. Elevation-wise, I mean, we worked very closely with L R K, Celebration Company's Town Architect. We met with him, Mark Jones, who lives here in Celebration, have them probably, I don't know, many, many, many times to go through the product to ensure that the product that we're offering in Island Village will be respectful of the existing product available that you've come to know and obviously you guys live in here. So elevation styles, I think everyone here knows that Celebration has a pattern book. So we worked very carefully with L R K to ensure that our product meets the requirements of the existing pattern book. Elevation style-wise, we're offering a classical Craftsman, which is a newer elevation style that you see a little bit in Artisan Park, but not in the original phases of Celebration, Low Country and Farmhouse. Square footage-wise, homes range from about 1,600 square feet at the low end to about 4,000 square feet at the high end.
Thank you, Paul. Appreciate that. Now, as I said at the beginning, you know, this is more, this is a meeting that's more about the land plan, the product for everything, there are more details that are yet to come. This is a step in the process, and we're moving along through the process. Later on, if you could go ahead and switch to the next slide, later on in our timeline, will more information be revealed? Okay? So we're all wondering, wow, Bennett, Manamy, you bought this thing back in September of 2017? You had a town hall meeting on, in March of 2018? What's taken so long? When are we going to go here? And the answers, or the reasons why it's taking so long is, one, we want to get it right. Okay? We're working hard and diligently with the Celebration Company, with L R K, we're talking with the ad hoc folks, learning, doing things, experimenting to a degree on what a land plan is. When you look at this crazy picture, not on, you know, the land plan picture with all the colors, the board, the thing that is underneath all these homes on our block here, with all these crazy colors and all that, we're on version, we joke about this back at the office, we're on version 18.09. That's how many iterations we've had with this thing to get it to where it is now. And we believe, obviously, we're at a point with everybody, you know, looking at this now, that we're able to present it to Osceola County for their consideration and their approval, along with, you know, obviously with Celebration Company having reviewed this as well and it coming along for the ride. And that's why it's taking so long. Having said that, we're also up against deadlines, right? I mentioned earlier that famous quote, and I alluded to who made that quotation. Everybody needs deadlines, right? Otherwise, we'd stagnate. I'm paraphrasing. That came from the master planner himself, Walt Disney. Okay? And the reason why we're not necessarily pushing hard, we've been pushing hard all along. We're at a point now where we need to continue moving the process forward. Otherwise, the school, elementary school that we are providing to the school district, who will ultimately build this school, is slated to open in the fall of 2020. That is not very far from now. Right? That is not very far from, not from a construction and development standpoint. Okay? So as it relates to the timeline and as it relates to more information coming, it's coming. Don't you worry. It's coming. There's more information coming in due time. Where we are now, obviously, today, the 31st, we're having this meeting. Next week, we have several public hearings with Osceola County, one on Wednesday with what is called the Development Review Committee. That's a staff-level type of review. Behind that on Thursday of next week is the Planning Commission. Up at the Osceola County Board Chambers with the Planning Commission, making their recommendation to openly the Board of County Commissioners, who will give the final approval on, what is it? What's the date? February 11th. Sorry. February 11th, that's a Monday. And I believe if you want the times and all that, you know, I could get it to you. Those times are also available on the website for Osceola County. Okay? Related to other timeline, to all of this, when, you know, so we've already cracked ground, broken ground for the road. When are you going to break ground for the actual subdivision? We're hoping that we can break ground for that subdivision, for the subdivision work here in the summer, June. I'm trying to stay vague. It's been very frustrating a little bit on our end, missteps here, you know, coordination issues there, related to the road. We wanted to start that way back in August, if you remember from the article, or September. Here we are just now, three months later, moving on the road in January. We are trying to move forward on the site development in June so that we could turn over a site over to the school district by the end of the summer so that they can start building vertically and be open in time for summer of 2020. Give them a few months to bring in desks, shake down the building, make sure the lights are working, you know, all sorts of good stuff, in time for the August 2020 opening bell for school. Related to our, for Manamy Homes timeline, you know, somewhere in the process, later on down the road, possibly the end of the calendar year of 2019, you know, we'll start rolling out marketing during that time, marketing material. We'll probably start getting stuff out there to you guys, you know, possibly nine months ahead of when we might open our first models, which could be summer of 2020, a little bit before then, hopefully. Okay? Models opening also meaning, you know, somewhere, somehow, how are we selling homes? If we could build a model, we could build a home. So how is that going to happen? All right? So somewhere in there, this diagram is, you know, kind of outlines that. Related to the school district, I've mentioned that already, they want to start, we want to start land development for them here in the summer. We want to, they want to start building by September with an opening later in 2020, like I had mentioned. Related to the apartments timeline, they're similar to Manamy Homes' timeline, except they build a big building with, I don't know, 20, 30, 40, 50, 60, 100 units in it at a time. So their construction process is, well, theoretically, theoretically is much longer than us trying to build a single home. So their schedule starts at around probably the end of this year on their vertical build, and probably 12, 15 months later, they may have their first CEO of residence moving in into the apartment complexes. What else is out there? Oh, okay, phase two, probably 2021. Phase three, it's getting further out there. Phase four, it's getting out there, right? Likely a business cycle is in there, we may be in the middle of one right now, you know, ups and downs of the market, you know, real estate market, economic market or whatever. We think we're probably in a five, seven, eight-year total timeframe, as far as Manamy as a developer is concerned, related to phase one through phase four. Okay? So, next slide, please. How are we going to get you more information? That's wonderful. We want to continue to do that. We want to continue to communicate to you, right? We want you to know what's going on with the community, with Island Village. We want you aware of what's going on. We intend, we would like, if we could all still work together, if it makes sense, to continue having periodic conversations with the ad hoc group. What we like about the ad hoc group is occasionally we can meet as a large, large, large group, but the vehicle for communication can't be this massive production, right? It takes a lot of effort. They're not, they're up here, our subject matter experts are up here not working, right? They're not drawing. They're just, you know, they're talking about what they've done, but they're not advancing plans and they're not directing their teams to do this or that or whatever. So what we like about, what I like about the ad hoc group is it gives us an opportunity to be human with one another, like Ed had said, with David, with Brian, with, where's Jeffrey? He's around here somewhere. Okay? So that we can talk face-to-face, and there's Gary back there. So we could talk face-to-face and understand where we are with that. So that's one of the things that we want to continue to do with our communications. And hopefully that, by us talking with them, it's filtering over to CROA, it's filtering over to the CDD, and information is getting spread out. Related, we, because we are having construction operations right now in proximity to a high school, we want to make sure that, one, we are not disrupting traffic too much out there. There's going to be some. And our instructions to our contractor has been that you will not mobilize major equipment during the pickup and drop-off and pickup hours of the high school, right? And whatever those times are, we have communications and meetings with our contractor and the school district in order to coordinate that. And our instructions to our contractor is, don't mess them up. Don't mess them up, you know? You know, the one day that they might mess them up, and hopefully they don't, is the day that some of the students are stressed out for a test, they got to get to school. They don't need to mess with our dump trucks out there. Please, you know, so we're communicating that way through an email system with the Celebration High School, because the CROA email system does not include the entire population that the school has, I believe, right? There are more, there are people from, that do not live in Celebration that are students or employees or whatever of the school, that need to know what's going on out there, because that's where all the disruption could be. For our construction operations, once we get on site, it's not public access yet. We're building that public access. So once we can get past or through Celebration Boulevard between World Drive and the high school, our instructions to our contractor is bang away. Bang away. Okay? Keep working. Related, related to communications, information will hopefully can be, you know, with the permission of CROA and all that, we'll be providing some information about our activities related to design and all that through the CROA website as appropriate. And finally, Manamy Homes is out to sell homes at the end of the day, correct? Information on the Manamy website will basically hit you on the head, right? Hey, please sign up. Hey, here's some stuff. Hey, you're going to get an email or a text or something. We're going to, you know, smartly, we're going to have a, we have a marketing plan that we will develop ahead of when we actually open for sales so that, just like as a development, we're going to start to understand what that schedule and budget is so that we can slowly and surely ramp up the, you know, ramp up the marketing efforts so that by the time we get to opening day, it could be a big thing for everybody. If you're interested in purchasing a home, we don't presume that you would, but we'd like it if you do. So, having said that, I believe we are at the end of the presentation part of the evening. We've gone a little bit over. We're at 7:30 now. No, we did not, we did not time this previously to see how long it would take. So we are available to take questions. We'll answer them as best as we can. We will strive still to conclude, let's give it 20 minutes, 30 minutes. Having said that, a lot of us up here on the design team, on the development team will be around if you want to continue to have conversations with us after 8 o'clock. So the format of this will be to please come up, state your name, address, just like if you were at a CROA meeting. Credit card information is not necessary, but please come up to the mic, don't be shy, but please ask those questions. We'll do our best to answer them. Thank you.
Okay. Well, I'm not shy. My name's Dave Finnegan. I'm what's known as a pioneer here in Celebration because we were here in '98. And I love the idea, what would Walt do? Because we've always asked, what would Walt do? And many of the things that have happened here in Celebration Walt wouldn't have done. So don't use Celebration as the model. Use Celebration as the caution, because there are many things that have happened here that those of us who've been here for the full length of this journey can tell you about. So the first question is, what about sustainability? I wonder about energy efficiency and LEED certification. I think Walt would say, let's make these the highest-tech homes and the highest-tech spaces available. What about solar energy on all the roofs? In California, it's a mandate now, it's part of the building code that you have to have solar on your roof. Well, what about here? Are we going to do that? What about charging stations for electronic vehicles? Because 10 years from now, we're all going to be junking our gasoline-powered cars, we're going to be driving EVs. So make sure you set up stations for electronic vehicles. What about not just black roofing, but some reflective roofing? We're not allowed to have reflective roofing here in Celebration. That's part of our A R C. But we should have reflective roofing to help keep our homes cool. What about double-pane windows on everything? What about space for vegetable gardens, maybe a community garden? What about a composting system? What about Florida-friendly planting? Instead of planting off of a menu that was developed out of state, let's do Florida-friendly planting. What about water management? Celebration was built in a way that all of the water that falls in Celebration ends up in the swamps. Make sure that you build this with a slope. If you stand on the opposite side of the Celebration lake and you look up, you see the golf course, it's six feet higher than you are. But you don't know that, because every bit of the dirt that came out of that lake was used to build the gradient that takes the water from the golf course past the homes and- the water from the golf course past the homes and into the swamp. We'll never have flooding in Celebration. Make sure you do that as well. So I just want to look, I want to make sure you're looking at sustainability and how will this look twenty, thirty, forty years from now? And don't use Celebration as a model, use Celebration as a caution. Thank you.
Thank you. What was your name again? I'm sorry.
I'm Dave, Dave Finnegan, and I live at four oh two Elderberry Court.
Dave, uh, thank you, thank you very much for, for, for all of that. Uh, we, we, um, just as a, as a, as a point of, you know, to, to the, the CCMC's app, one, we are live streaming, two, this is going to be available on, on YouTube as well, correct? Because that was a, quite a loaded question. And, uh, yes, we are looking at a lot of those things. I cannot answer all of those precisely at the moment. Uh, that's a, that is a multidisciplinary type of a question out there. Yes, we are, uh, we are learning a lot of lessons, you know, through the ad hoc group, through the, through Celebration Company themselves on what to do and what not to do. Uh, related to the homes and all that, um, those are designs that will be coming later, but related to the, the land plan, uh, a lot of those questions are being answered and solved, uh, now through our, our design process. Without getting into all the icky, icky details, which I would then have to pass over to the engineer, um, please, if you want to have more assurances on those questions, our engineers here, for, for one, also our home builders are, not home builders, our architects are here, that may be able to answer some of those questions related to sustainability. One thing I will note, related to Manami Homes and sustainability, we do have a vice president of sustainability, uh, who is headquartered up in Toronto. We, as a company, have that, um, that gene, right? We want to get there. Uh, we're not there yet. I, I personally, I recognize that here, uh, you know, you know, what is our opportunity for solar, you know, for example, in that issue? What is our opportunity for solar here? Are we going to wait for the regulation to come up to us? Or are we going to get ahead of it? I don't know. Those are, those are bigger questions that, and philosophical questions that we just can't quite answer right now, but those are concerns that we have as well. Thank you, David. Where, where, there you are. Thank you. Yes, sir.
Yeah, how you doing? Steve North, it's eleven thirty Tapestry Drive. Uh, my questions are, I have three of them, somewhat related. First question is related to the bridge. In the March meeting, we, we, there was a lot of concern about the width of the bridge, number of lanes, and it's still showing two lanes. Is it two lanes just for operation? Is it two lanes plus some additional shoulder space, allow three vehicles to pass in case of emergency? Uh, the second question's related.
Answer that first one first.
You want to ask all three? They all related?
Okay.
Can you hear me now? Are they all related questions to the bridge?
No, no, they're all related to the bridge, they're related to transportation and roads. Go ahead. Do you want to answer the first one? Go ahead.
If that's how you'd like us to answer them, one at a time or all three?
Sure, I can tell you it is striped as a two lane road. Actually, um, because of those concerns, it is, uh, it's three full lanes. It's thirty foot curb to curb on the roadway. The bridge actually goes an additional two feet. So you have two twelve foot lanes with four foot of shoulder area to enable for.
All right, thank you. Uh, question number two is related to the rear access. Where exactly does that come in? At Lake Wilson Road? Is that where the access point is on the, on the rear side?
It would eventually be Osceola County Polkline Road.
Osceola County Polkline Road. And also you mentioned it's somewhat in relationship to the highway system, that this is some relationship, the, the back door is driven by the highway system that's being put in or proposed. What's the relationship to that? I didn't pick up on that. You said the highway system is, was proposed to come in that way.
Oh, I see, I see. I can, I can start to answer that. I see also David Tomek with Osceola County that might be able to answer that, uh, a lot better. Uh, he's been involved in that comprehensive plan a lot longer than, than Manami has, frankly. So, thank you.
Yes, hi, I'm Dave Tomek with Osceola County. Can you guys hear me in the back? No?
Okay, how about this one? You can? Okay, good. I'm Dave Tomek with Osceola County. I think the reference to the highway was the original roadway connector that was being proposed on our transportation map in our comprehensive plan. Originally, it was supposed to connect from Celebration Boulevard with a, an overpass going over I four, the tie into World Drive and Crippen Street, um, to, to, um, one ninety-two. So, we got rid of that connector and then it's just a two lane avenue, similar to what these guys will eventually build to connect it at the south end now for that extra connector. Um, so the reference to the highway was, I think, the old road, which actually was an overpass over I four, um, to World Drive and Griffin.
Thank you, David. I was trying to, uh, trying to.
Oh, yeah, and the toll road, I'm sorry.
Correct, thank you, David. I was, when I was speaking, I was, uh, obviously not as eloquent as that. Could you please pass the mic? I think that one might be not, not as, uh.
I'm short but loud. My name is Joan Gruck. I have two homes in Celebration. I am not at all happy about this bridge you even just talked about narrowing it. You're talking twenty-six hundred cars minimum coming in and out. How many of those are going to the school at the same time, coming out at the same time? You say go over the bridge and you get a scenic view and it's calm. And well, I'm sorry, when I look at I four, that's not what comes into my mind. And that's not what comes into my mind when all these people are stopped at the schools trying to pick up their kids and you can't go through. So by making one lane in and one lane out, even if you're widening it, is not enough for the amount of cars, the amount of people cutting through. Cutting through the back end is not going to slow them down, it's going to slow us homeowners down from going home. So that is not a luxury of life that we want to pay for. I think you should have two roads in and two roads out, because it's going to cost you more money to make more bridges. But you're talking thirteen hundred homes. Walt Disney built more than one way to Disney World. Manami can build more than one way into Island Village. Any comments? And did you do an impact study?
We did a traffic study. Chris, you want to take that, not to, not to, uh, if you could take that question since you, you, your group helped with the traffic study there?
So we did do a traffic study based off of ITE, the latest edition of the ITE Trip Manual for trips generated for, it's, it's how you, um, determine how many trips are going to be generated by the community. It's the industry accepted standard, um, with the two lane road option, with and without the backdoor connection to, uh, Osceola County, or to Osceola Polkline Road. And it, it does work, um, the two lane road does. I cannot remember off the top of my head. But it was, it was, it was, the amount of cars that were, um, that were used in the study was generated based off of the over one thousand single family homes, the three hundred multifamily homes, the a thousand kid elementary school and the civic uses and the commercial space that would be there. So the trips generated for that daily, or what were you, what was used to ensure that this road would be sufficient.
I believe, uh, David, we had submitted the traffic study to you from Atkins as one of our, one of our submitted requirements for the road portion. Yes, yes.
Um, so that everybody knows, um, the applications that are being submitted through the county, if you go on the county's website, um, osceola.org, um, you can actually find their applications. And, um, I, what I can do is, um, whosever the liaison for the Celebration folks tonight, we can give you a link and they can send that out. And as part of that, the transportation studies, the preliminary subdivision plans, the various housing products, all the things that are being submitted are public record and we can make that available there.
My last question. Can the back gate be a gated community where you have to have a car to get in and get out and not anybody can get in, like Legacy Dunes has?
So, if behind you, he's shaking, he's shaking his head. No.
No, it would be, it would be a public road.
Yeah. Pass it to the next. I believe this is Gary.
All right, Gary, what's my thought when you're resident here in Celebration? Uh, first I want to thank you for your professionalism, your study and research of not only Celebration, but urban planning and design. You've made a good presentation. My comment is to the Osceola County Commissioner Chabry and, uh, I'm concerned that if you build a two lane road, which is a main thoroughfare through Island Village, phase one, two, three, and four, and then the construction entrance at the south, the back door, is turned into a public road after the fact, then the infrastructure built as is will not support that opening to the public. It will support the Island Village going to and from the high school and down to the Celebration, but it doesn't take into account what I think will be all the pedestrian people that just want to get somewhere else and avoid I four or some other building. So I see two choices here. If you allow them to build this infrastructure as designed, and then open the back door ten years later, we're asking for trouble. And you can't restructure the infrastructure, particularly when that two lane road is in front of everybody's house, and you don't want to turn it into a four lane road. The alternative is to change the design now, tell us now that you intend to open the back door and design it for that extra traffic so we can later live with it. That's my comment. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Daniel Giallo. I'm at twelve twenty-one Celebration Avenue.
Hi, Daniel.
Hi, I have two quick questions. Uh, one is for the road in and out, I've seen some roads where they kind of shift, where like when there's people coming in, it's a two lane going in and then at another time it shifts, so it's a two lane going out. I don't know if that's the type of thing that can be done with this kind of road. And the second question is, I've, not only been here about two years, but some residents I've seen have not been able to stay in their home because they've gotten older, they've gotten injured. Is there any aspect in some or all of the homes that you're building to take into account universal design for things like wheelchairs and spaces for lifts and things like that?
Those are two excellent questions, uh, one related to transportation and, and one related to the homes. Uh, we'll defer to the homes to our, our architects over here. Related to transportation, uh, would you like to answer that question? Uh, you know, the, one, the roadway network that will be woven throughout Island Village will be Osceola County right of way. Uh, very similar to how we have it now here in, uh, in Celebration, where in the middle is Osceola County right of way, on the, on the perimeter of that right of way is CDD right of way, if you want to call it that. But where the CDD owns from the back of curb to the back of the sidewalk, I believe, which includes the maintenance of the street trees, uh, in there. So, one, Osceola County will, will own the roadway network here, including the road coming in and out of Island Village. Two, I don't believe that there are any operational plans right now. Dave's shaking his head. So I'm probably talking out of line. Would you like to answer that or, or no?
So the whole, the whole benefit of living in Celebration and doing this traditional neighborhood design and stuff and urban design, um, is so that you don't, um, like do the two lanes in one direction to make things go faster. You know, so the idea, the idea for the transportation is to facilitate safe traffic flow, but not necessarily facilitate like a mass exodus or a mass entrance fast, so that you make it unsafe for other types of, of, um, passage, like, um, for the walkers or for the bicyclists, you know? So, so do it in two ways, one way or the other probably will not be one of those options we look at. It's more about traffic calming, more like making it safe for all modes of traffic going in and out. So the two lanes is actually a planned and long-term solution for this, uh, community.
Okay. Thank you, David. And related to your second question, I believe it was, uh, maybe you could help me out here because I know about blue pipe and purple pipe and green pipe, which nobody really cares about, but as long as you could turn on the water, you're welcome. Like Paul, can you answer your question about the, um, the ADA, the American Disabilities or, and or the, uh, how a home can be furnished for such wheelchair or, uh, some sort of accessibility?
Thank you. For our Sycamore Store product, um, we're looking into universal design. We have to work with the town architect. Part of the, uh, pattern book and the guidelines requires that the product is, is raised out of the ground, um, which is kind of counterintuitive to universal design, so we'd have to work with the town architect to get those guidelines, um, adjusted so, so we can make that product available.
Thank you, great questions. Is that it? That's all? Oh, well, don't be bashful. Come up to, uh, account, to the queue here. There's a line forming.
Hi, I'm Carol Swagler. Um, I have a question that probably is not directed so much to you, the developers, but to the county officials. And I think one of the things that gets confused in terms of the traffic here and the traffic counts are the fact that a traffic count in an area that's generated by the IT numbers tells you for that land use how much traffic will be generated. The biggest concern that many Celebration residents have about a back door and about the development of this land is the people at Champions Gate, the people that live in other parts of the county and are, who are coming through this area and the action that they may be taking. And I don't know how you, you as the developer cannot plan for that, but you as the county can.
Thank you, Carol. Yeah, so, so that's, that's a good point. So if we were designing the roads coming into the community as four or six lane roads so that we would bring a lot of traffic into this community and through it, that would be a concern. But what we're, what we're proposing here long term are two lane connector roads, just to get folks an option to get in and out. Um, two lane roads, one lane in and one lane out, are not designed to brand a ton of traffic either way. So, and the other thing is, is the length of these roads and the way they're designed are not conducive for somebody living way over in, in Champions Gate to go out of their way to get to three or four miles of two lane roads, just to get somewhere quicker. It's more designed as options for folks that actually live and work in that area to actually get back and forth and get to school, get to, like, their work, um, actually get to the downtown, et cetera. So the key things are, it'll actually have bicycle paths that'll be easy to use, sidewalks that'll be safe and easy to use. So all the options will be there for the shorter trips, but also for safe access in and out of the community. It's not intended to bring in a fast road to get a bunch of surrounding communities into Celebration. So it's really not designed to bring in all that traffic that you're talking about.
Will the county, will the county and their transportation plan take into consideration the volumes that, that it now has?
Yes, ma'am. Yeah, and, and I think that's one of the reasons why on the future transportation map, it's actually specific as to what types of roads. The idea is to have more of these kinds of roads so that the options are there, as opposed to relying on just one road. So when they actually made this change, um, there were actually traffic models that supported the change.
Thank you, David. Thank you, Carol.
Evening, Algroves, five oh six Sycamore Street. These questions, I promise, are just pretty straightforward, yes or no? First question is about the construction of the road. Does the roundabout go first at this end as you push forward down into Island Village?
I, I can answer that, because he's just the designer and we're directing the, the action with, uh, with, uh, with Junior Davis, who is our contractor. We have coordinated with our contractor and the school district, uh, and the Celebration High School, such that, that roundabout will not be constructed until June of, where are we, nineteen, twenty, this year, during the summer months.
Okay.
So, so as to minimize, uh, disruption to the high school. Having said that, there may be some limited utility constructions, uh, not during the summer, uh, so that we could connect utilities and all that. Again, our communication with the high school about when that would happen and all is paramount. We understand, want to understand and want to minimize disruption to, uh, to kids trying to get to, take the tests. Do well, don't worry about traffic. So we, we're going to do our best to do that.
Got it. Next question is directed to the homes and themselves. Any zero
back later and turn it over with it or not have the ability to push all the stuff that's coming for self-driving cars, maybe that'll calm the traffic anyway along the way.
Well, hopefully, you know, aside from traffic, we can calm ourselves down too as well, you know, with technology somehow. Yes, we are working with consultant Amy Westwood to help advise us on how can we do that, like I said earlier, not only fiber to the home in the ground, you know, with physical cables, but what is our long-term plan for wireless connectivity out here related to 5G and all that? Do we need to look at cell tower type coverage and what kind of coverage do we have at Celebration? I understand that some folks here are Sprint customers. I was considering the Starbucks and basically have a nice paperweight of a phone because of the connectivity with downtown Celebration. So I don't quite understand what the problem is. Well, I think I understand what the problem is. I don't understand how it can be solved. However, Manamy, the developer, you know, we're, a problem is really Island Village, not necessarily all of Celebration. We're not, what do you call it, the magic pill? What is it called? But yeah, we're trying to build Island Village in concert with what is going on here already with Celebration and try to learn as much as we can and not repeat mistakes or issues that occurred previously.
Okay. One last input for question directly you might know about. If you talk about the schools up front and like you just said, it's easier than to get people in down the extra mile line for that facility. Are we looking at redistricting that comes up with this school just being K5 and what happens with the rest of the schools in town?
That is an excellent question that I cannot answer. However, I don't know if the school board, school board members are still here. If they could answer that, great. If not...
Hi, Terry Castillo. Do I have to give my answers to? So where is the gentleman who asked the question? So we're super, super early right now, so we can't give you that specific information yet, but if you don't have my email or my contact information, please get with me. I will be more than happy to keep you, you know, up to date with all that. So, no answers yet.
So are you going to turn, you're going to turn the current element into a dedicated clinical and...
We're not. No, that's not what we're looking to do. But again, I will be more than happy to have those one-on-one conversations and if you want my email, we can keep having this continuous conversation.
How are you? Hi, thank you. Doing well, thank you. Lou Moore, 807 Oak Shadows Road. Thank you guys for coming. Appreciate it. Openness is very appreciated. Residents are very appreciative of that. Yeah, no, we definitely appreciate it. I did want to throw out just real quickly, I wasn't going to mention about cell phone towers, but when Celebration was developed, everybody had a house phone. So the Celebration company didn't care that much about putting cell phone towers in the neighborhoods. Now that came later when everybody started dropping their cell, you know, their home phones. So I think somebody, Dave Finnegan, talked about future-proofing and a lot of things like that, something really to think about. It took us a long time to even find places to put cell phone towers in town. And just recently, the last cell phone tower was at the high school, and that was, took a long time for us to actually get that. But, so there are pockets still in Celebration. So where you guys are, right there, the cell phone tower at the high school is the best, but then you'll get it from the other end. But something to think about from the very beginning because technology, by the time we started building, already surpassed us. What's that? Yeah, yeah. So I did, actually, since we have the school board represented here, I've never met Terry Castillo, but I did want to mention something to you guys is, again, when the Celebration company did some things, they give us a great palette. There's some things that they did wrong, you know, in terms of if they went back and did it. And I think that when you look at the school and the parks and rec in terms of what happened in the community, we have, you know, a lack, from the beginning, we've had a lack of parks and recreation facilities. And one of the things we did and Celebration company did was, well, let's put the school in the middle and we'll use that school facility as recreation facilities for residents too. And it was a very smart idea. It's in the middle of town, we should all use it. Then over the years, that changed. First, there's security issues would happen with the school, so it got fenced out. And then also the opportunity for residents to use these things. So if you, you know, you look outside right now and you see the school, the field, the baseball field, and you see the field out in front, they're primarily being used by Celebration residents, not the school at all. Things inside the fence are completely used by the school. They do use that, but we also use it too. But when you look at the baseball fields, and I know that there's been some discussions of putting some, you know, starting already that discussion with the school, talking about what do the fields look like and that kind of stuff. What I would caution you to do is give the school the minimum what they need for that, but if you're talking about baseball fields or things that you think the community's going to use, which they're going to and the school's not, do not give that to the Osceola County school board. Not that that's a bad thing, I just don't want to make it a negative, but the fact is, is it's very difficult for our community to use those fields if they are Osceola County schools. And they'll say it's easy to do. It is not easy to do, I can tell you from experience. We've had to sign a use agreement with Osceola County School District, and even with that, I'm not, I don't represent baseball here, but we have a little league which is for the entire west Osceola County. They're mandated, it's not just Celebration residents, about 75% come from Celebration, 25% come from the outside Celebration, but when you look at the fields and they have to put money in themselves, they are just trying to, say, fix a dugout or just trying to do things, and they are having a very, very hard time even trying to get it through the Osceola County school board to fix things up and to get things done. It's very frustrating in terms of for residents to do that, and it's because the school district is not set up like a parks and rec department like Seminole County or Osceola County or anything like that. Those parks and rec departments are set up to rent facilities, you know, and they have people, that's their job. School boards tend not to have that, so it makes it a lot harder. So I would recommend for you guys, if it's possible, to think about what the school needs, but those other things could be used by the school, but do not deed that to the Osceola County. Give that to Crowa and let Crowa handle that. It would make a huge difference, and that's something we can discuss at a different time.
Yes, thank you. Not to jump onto a non-question there. One, we hear that. Two, we think, and we're still planning, yet, Phase 2, Phase 3, Phase 4, maybe opportunities there. We understand, we're trying to keep posts, you know, our finger on the pulse here with Celebration, for sure. We don't get it straight all the time. We're not, we're not residents per se, right? We don't have homes here. However, we're trying to keep up with, I think last month it was the Parks and Rec Master Plan Update. There was a needs study that is going on that will come out later on this year. We are definitely very interested in what that may reveal and how Phase 2 through 4 could accommodate the needs that are revealed in that study. Ultimately, as you said, our plan has been for not necessarily the fields at the school, all of the school property is going to be the school. And however, whatever goes on with the field there, I don't know yet, and the school district may, and other people may as well. But our intent is to turn over common area spaces as appropriate to Crowa and/or to the Celebration CCD, CCDD, the Celebration CCD, United States of America, USA America, ATM machine. Yes, sir?
Yeah, and just to add a couple of things to that, and I saw David here earlier, he's sitting up here, but Crowa is actually going to be doing an agreement with the county soon, and they're already planning on adding three soccer fields to the active field. So they're actively looking to increase the availability in the Celebration area. So that is something that they're actually addressing very well.
Yes, that's correct. Our understanding with the civic corridor build out 4.5 million trillion, whatever, trillion, billion dollar program that's going on out there. We have a few more, time for a few more questions. How many are in line? Is it...
Yeah, let me just ask one more. By the way, multipurpose fields, not just soccer fields, yes. Multipurpose fields, yeah. One of the last things I want to mention is, when you're talking about the facility that will be a park with pools and that kind of stuff, and what does structure look like as you build that? We have in town, we have one area that actually has a pretty nice facility in town that is closed for those residents only, which you may or may not know, but it includes a restaurant and, you know, a club. And if you think about it in terms of how Celebration grew, Lakeside Park we have now, which is one of the biggest, if we created something like that, a bigger facility, it would get used by all of the residents, I think, for sure. A club-type atmosphere just for residents too, that would be like, you know, one we have here in town. So, I mean, I think that at the end of the day, it'll be used quite a bit, because I know you're talking pool-wise. I would also recommend when you talk about the pool, is a pool should be something big enough to use for the high school, so the high school doesn't have to come all the way to Lakeside. They use the pool now, and that would be better to use Island Village.
Yes, so we are looking at the amenity program in F1, our Phase 1, let me call it that, alongside with Streetlight Residential. As you know, all the apartments, or most of the apartments, I don't have a complete census, most of the apartments here in Celebration have their own pool that is unavailable to the rest of the residents, but available to those residents in that apartment complex. And they are, those residents are able to use other facilities within Celebration. Our intent is not to create an atmosphere that is there at Artisan Park where it's a private-ish type club. Our intent is that this facility will be ultimately turned over to Crowa for use. Will it hit all of those needs? I don't know at this point. A lot of factors come into play. Remember, there's a lot of pressures pushing on this. Honestly, some of those pressures are financial, some of those pressures are deadline, and we also have an opportunity in Phase 2 to continue the amenity program. We don't know what that yet looks like. So, thank you.
Okay, so it's after 8 o'clock. I just wanted to remind everybody, the county's website, www.oceola.org, and our board meetings are right on the front page. You can go to it and get all the application materials we talked about. But also, I will give my contact information to whoever's running the meeting so that you can get a link out to you. And all this transportation stuff we've been talking about has been happening over a long period of time, so it actually goes even before the current commissioner, but also will, and will continue for the next 20 to 50 years.
And Peggy Chodry, you're Osceola County Commissioner, current commissioner, and just to piggyback on what Dave said, I just wanted to say that although all this was approved prior to my administration and end of 2016, I want you to know that I am here today, one, because I want to obviously hear from the citizens and see all the concerns, two, I also want to work, we want to collaborate with and make sure that we're constantly speaking to the developers and making sure that your concerns are addressed. And I want to thank you folks for doing this, for the citizens and for myself to listen in about your project and all your ideas. And more importantly, the fact that you guys are open in your phases and your future phases to come up with ideas such as what Dave said, with technology and with the future is coming. I think that's going to help your residents anyway, and selling your product is going to be great if you have these implementations, because I know future generations are looking for those things as well. So I'm here to listen. Like Dave said, please, if you have any questions, please contact us in the county. Everything they give us is public information for you folks to see. So please know that anything that's submitted comes to us, and once it comes to us, it's available for you to see. So reach out to us. If you don't have my email, just go to the website. You can go ahead and contact me directly. I could put you with the right staff on any questions you have. And you heard the developers say that they still have lots of steps to go through because the county is making sure, we've just recently implemented, making sure that standards are going to be obliged by, make sure that development is building proper product, but then also making sure that we're trying to work with them and making sure they want, the good product that they want to bring in is acceptable as well. There are limitations to us as a county as well, though. There's like, there's some stuff that they could implement that's not a requirement, but we would love to see, right? So that's why they're here today. So thanks again for you folks doing this. Thank you to all the citizens that are here so late and giving us your time and allowing me to listen to what your concerns are. But please reach out if you have any other questions for Osceola County, okay? Thank you.
I'm probably the last question, but it's totally different.
Yes, yes. Totally different. It's about the... One last question. This young lady has been waiting all day.
I like the young...
So, thank you. In your name, please.
Kathy Carlson, 1243 Akila Loop here in Celebration. My question is a product question, and we discussed, we didn't discuss, but we were told various products. We've heard very nicely from Streetlight Residential, but there were other products mentioned from single-family to lot sizes and the state homes. And many of us in the community are very anxious, not worried, just very anxious to know the builders that might be enjoying, other than Streetlight, Manamy, you know, the state builders, and we're used to the villages coming on board over the beginning of time, where we found out there were other builders involved, Esso, Weakly, Morrison, just to name a few. Will there be other builders that will be used in this development?
We don't know yet. We would like to think that Manamy will build out all of this, but who's going to win the Super Bowl? We've got an entire industry that does not, that half of, well, not an entire, half of the industry cannot predict properly who's going to win the Super Bowl, let alone what the score is. So is there economic, are there economic forces and pressures and things that will happen over time? I don't know. I don't know, honestly. You know, God forbid, because I truly love the company I am with, and I'm not saying that because my boss is here, he, okay? But this is a very, very unique company. I would hate to see that we get bought out, but the fact of the matter is, is that at the end of the day, anything is for sale at the right price. At the right price, correct? I hope that our founder, Peter Gilton, does not, but, you know, what happens, you know, he's 70-some-odd. What's his retirement plan? He's got a pretty good 401K, I imagine, but yes.
Have we built state homes before or we didn't?
So, how about this? Well past our time, we'd like to conclude. Is that okay? Shall I go ahead and close it off here? I want to again thank David Anderson with Crowa, Brian over here as well for helping serve on the ad hoc group. If you have questions, more questions, we're up here for a few more minutes and likely we're hitting something downtown for some food. Thank you.